For Monday, November 4th. Mission pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilman Scrinjus on military absence. Councilman Livingston.
Present.
Councilwoman Cruns.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Paffstra.
Present.
Councilman Matso.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
That's one absence, Scrinjus.
Okay, and to, uh...
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
No, she didn't. Sorry about falling off first. Start with, uh, Vines.
Good morning.
Start Vines and, uh, Leah here. How are you tonight?
Good evening. How are you? Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Thanks for having us. So we've submitted an offer to purchase 157 Susquehanna and 1 Fayette Street with the goal of building an office there to house our organization and create one building where we can bring all of our staff and materials together. We're undergoing a lot of growth.
Is that a corner?
Yeah.
It is set at the Fayette-Susquehanna Street corner.
Yeah.
It's also page 11 in your heading, so...
There's a diagram on 15, 16, 17 of the building itself.
Yeah, so they're contiguous lots, 157 Susquehanna and 1 Fayette. They're right adjacent to each other. And so, yeah, so having this space would allow us to keep growing our staff, expanding the impact that we can have in the community. All of our programs have undergone a lot of growth in the last three years and, you know, especially with the expansion of the urban farm right around the corner. We really want to have something within walking distance of the urban farm. We have increased the number of youth we've been serving every year, and we're up to 25 at this point, probably increase in the future again. And we need a space that they can come to that is an easy short walk from the urban farm, but out of the flood plain and still within the center of downtown, ideally for those that we serve in addition to our youth to be able to easily get to us by public transportation and walking, et cetera. So it's an ideal spot for us, and since it is already an empty lot, it seems, you know, like a good, a good starting point for us so that we're not displacing any other uses or existing buildings and also brings down the cost of development. So that's...
I mean, square feet?
Um, between 3,000 and 4,000. We're working with an architect to finalize. We had an initial drawing, an initial layout plan of about 3,000 square feet, but we're hoping to put a basement in so that we can have cold storage for our products so that we don't have to store our produce offsite. So she was working on the elevations and figuring out what we can fit in there so the ADA compliant.
Is there any specific challenge to doing straw bale construction with the city's building plans?
We've been meeting with the, um, with code enforcement and building, and no concerns right now. It's been done in other areas, Kirkwood, Vestal, locally, in addition to many other places, and it works well with our codes.
So straw bale is what, that's like your insulation? What kind of work, so do you use those?
It's, uh, it's stucco, basically. So it has a three-hour fire rating, so it is very safe, but also well insulated. And, you know, kind of a novel thing, but really fun because we can have anybody off the street help us build it. So it's very kind of a, like, easy, low-tech kind of building to construct. But we will be working with, uh, you know, professional general contractor as well as Habitat for Humanity on the build.
Well, you and I already talked about this. I'm supportive of this. It's in my district, and I hope everyone else is supportive as well. Exciting to see you guys expanding in this, uh, this way.
Are there questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We have our financial auditors here.
Are you lucky?
Yes. Right now.
Here's a present for you tonight.
Another four feet down. It's like a lot of readings.
So the good news is, this last one I'm handing out is what I'm gonna focus on tonight. It's kind of a summary of all of those documents. So I'm Greg Evans from the Bonde O group on the Engagement Partner. With me today is Jake Skevel. He's the field manager, the creator of all the field work. So what my plan is, is to give you a high-level overview of the audit and the audit results, and then if you guys have any specific questions, we can...
That's what I meant by that. This straw bale building? Yeah.
We're into the audits.
Let's talk about this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So again, the last packet there, the presentation of audit results, will take you through what we did and what we found. Again, so this is for the year ended December 31, 2018. So at this point, the report, the numbers are a little bit dated, but we'll, we'll take you through what we found. On page two is the scope of the audit. So what we did was an audit of your financial statements, an audit of your federal awards, and an audit of your New York State Department of Transportation awards. You're required to have that audit if you spend more than $100,000 in DOT funds. The federal audit, you're required to have an audit if you spend more than $750,000 in federal. So those are two compliance pieces that we took care of for you. Over on page three is a summary of those results.
Which, uh, which book are you in?
Yep. So page three is what we call the executive summary. So we were hired to give an opinion on your financial statements. Those financial statements are obviously the responsibility of the city and all the numbers in there. Our opinion on those financial statements are that it's unmodified, meaning a clean opinion, highest level assurance that we can provide for you. As part of our audit, we also reviewed internal controls over financial reporting. We did have one finding that we'll discuss at the end. And we are required to report that there were some material audit adjustments that we had when performing the audit. Again, that will be included as part of the finding. Anytime your auditor comes in and proposes material audit adjustments, it's almost automatically deemed a material weakness. Your auditor cannot be part of your internal controls. And we'll get into the details of that and how that came about when we, when we talk about that. We're required to let you know that the financial statements, there are significant accounting estimates in there. Those estimates are things like pension liabilities and retiree health liability and depreciation, all things that don't necessarily impact the way you budget, but are required that we report it as part of your financial statements. On page four, the results of the single audits, we had an unmodified opinion on compliance and no findings related to internal control over compliance. So with regard to your federal awards, again, a clean opinion, no findings. Same thing with regard to the state, an unmodified opinion on your directing material programs. Over on page five, I just pulled out, you know, as opposed to having you guys flip through those financial statements, I pulled out some of the things that I thought were, were key in terms of the financial highlights. Pages 13 and 14 are your government-wide financial statements. And again, that's the culmination of all the assets and liabilities of the city pulled Long-term assets, long-term liabilities. In terms of long-term liabilities, you had a total of 202 million. Those long-term liabilities are detailed in the back. General obligation debt was at the year-end, 125 million, increased by about 7.5 million for the year. Total capital assets are 305 million. Again, that's netted depreciation. That includes all the land, buildings, machinery, equipment, infrastructure. That detail's in the back in the footnotes on page 37. Again, the value in those numbers becomes questionable, obviously, as a city depreciation doesn't mean a whole lot to you, but generally accepted accounting principles require us to report those and report those. So, um, again, the government-wide financial statements are there primarily for information type purposes, in my opinion. So on to page six is the fund financial statements. So again, this is the, the world that you more live in, the budgetary basis of accounting. The city's general fund reported a reduction in fund balance for the year of about $2.3 million. Your final budget had you using about $5.3 million of fund balance. So in terms of budget-to-actual variance, it was a favorable variance of about $2.3 Positive result there in terms of budget-to-actual results. Unassigned fund balance at 123118 for the general fund was about $10.8 million. Again, you kind of look at this as your savings fund, your savings account for the city. This represents about 16% of the general fund expenditures for the year. This is almost precisely where the state comptroller would tell you you should be in terms of unassigned fund balance, the 16%. So, you know, in good shape there. Non-property tax revenues in the general fund went up about almost a million dollars, so that's your sales tax revenue. And you beat your budget on sales tax by about 1.1 million in the general fund. This is consistent with, you know, obviously what we would expect to have seen on a statewide basis. We've all kind of seen an uptick in sales tax. So again, it translates to, you know, a better-than-budget result there. Expenditures in the general fund came in about $1.8 million less than budget, mostly related to employee benefit expenditures, which were about $1.4 million below budget. Employee benefits are historically hard to budget, so again, this is a number that, you know, in our experience, we've seen kind of jump around from year to year. One year, you may miss your budget and go over by significant amount, forcing you to budget a little conservatively, and then you get a result like this of $1.4 million below budget in benefit expenditures. Capital projects fund, at year-end, you had $35 million in cash restricted for ongoing projects and a bond anticipation liability of about 111 million. So when you look at the capital projects fund, your fund balance is going to be negative. Again, this is a timing issue related to the way we need to account for short-term liabilities, which is your band liability. When that is converted to long-term financing, when you actually issue the bonds for those projects, the revenue will be recorded in those funds, and then that deficit will go away. So really just a timing issue due to the nature of the way you decided to fund your capital projects. Any questions about the very quick overview on the financial statements?
I was just curious, you said that the sales tax revenue was taking up, there's like a statewide trend?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little more about that?
And that's just my experience with, you know, our, all of our clients have, have seen an uptick in sales tax, at least for 123118. I'm not sure where we are with 19, but certainly, you know, across the Syracuse area, the Rochester area, Albany area, we've, we've seen an increase in sales tax for the year. Again, I'm not sure how 19 is, is trending, whether that's gonna hold true or not, but certainly 18 was fairly consistent as a positive. Okay, so page seven. As I mentioned, we did have what we deem to be a material weakness in internal controls, mostly related to the fact that, um, we, when we came in, we look at your financial statements, we look at the presentation of those financial statements. This is our first year doing the audit, just probably should have started with that. So the, we always have to get comfortable with those beginning balances and the presentation of those financial statements. I will tell you that more times than not, this finding is a result of that. And this isn't me bashing your, your prior firm or anything, it's just when we come in and look at things differently, it, it's just a, it could be just a difference of opinion. But in this case, one of the major things that, that we did was we looked at your component units, which are the Urban Renewal Agency and the Local Development Corporation. And essentially, the, the accounting standards will lay out a checklist of, all right, when you have situations like this, how do you treat them? You have two types of component units. You have discreetly presented, which are presented outside of the body of the primary government, which would be the city. And then you have blended component units, which would basically be encompassed within the city's financial statements. So when we went through and we did our checklist, we made the determination and presented it to management that those financial statements that for Bura and BLDC that were previously presented as discreetly should be presented as blended component units. So what that forces us to do is a prior period adjustment. We adjust the beginning balances, so when you look at the current year, everything is where they're supposed to be. In terms of what that means, in, in terms of findings, again, definitionally, the auditing standards will tell you that if we do prior period adjustments, that means we have a material weakness. I don't necessarily agree with that, but we have to live by the rules of the auditing standards. We are peer-reviewed. If we were to go in and make prior period adjustments and we didn't report this to you as, as a finding, we would get beat up in our peer review and we would have a finding. So that's kind of the nature of this. Again, there's very little room for error in terms of recording. Standards now say when we basically find anything, it needs to be reported to you as the governing body. That's the nature of this finding. I don't want you to think that we came in here and things were a mess. Things were not a mess. It just needed some cleanup in terms of presentation to be presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that's, that's the bulk of this finding. I will say that, um, I looked it up today. Since 2003, there's been 50 new, 52 new accounting pronouncements. For a staff your size, to keep up with that number of accounting pronouncements would be nearly impossible. And that's really what a lot of this is based on. Not unusual. Again, I don't expect to come back and have a, have a finding next year based on what we've looked at already for, for this year and the work that we've done. This is more related to those financial statements that were issued last year.
So, so let me understand. So you don't, your accounting firm doesn't agree with the previous accounting firm, the way they treated this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that, that happens all the time? Or it happens...
It does, yes.
Why is that? You're reading the same rules, right? You're applying the same rules, right?
I, I would agree. I will say this. We, my team is made up of 12 people. We, we work on governments all year. We're not a team that spends January to April working on tax returns, and then when we're not busy during April to December, we start looking at governments. I like to say we're, we're the experts in this, and I, and I like to say that quite frankly, that's why you guys hired us, to come in and make sure that your financial statements were presented properly. So, so yes, I mean, I had full expectation, knowing the prior firm and knowing that the work that, that they've done in the past and that we've picked up from them, that this was going to happen. And again, I, I'm not gonna get into the way they operate or whatever. I just know that this is consistent with what has happened when we've picked up finds from them in the past.
Is there a ripple effect of doing a prior period adjustment?
There's not.
There's not?
So basically, that prior period adjustment is, we, we went back, we've, we've readjusted those balances. Going forward, everything we believe is now presented properly and will continue to be going forward.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. You may not appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. President, if we could quickly invite the Vines folks back to just to answer the questions that were remaining.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If anybody has any questions, feel free to, you know, Chuck knows how to reach out to me. We'd be happy to answer those.
All right. Thank you. Let's put William back. Are there some questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
May I apologize for not introducing Jessica Dillon back? She's one of our board members.
Hi, Jessica. Jessica. I like the idea of the project going on, but what is using straw bale construction?
Sure. I have some copies of a primer on this construction. I have seven copies, so just enough for council members. So straw bale construction uses, um, it uses a traditional frame for your building. So we'll likely be going with steel frame so that we can have a building suitable for the kind of layout that we want. And instead of packing your walls with fiberglass insulation or blown-in cellulose, those kinds of things, you put in bales of straw and stack them and styro them. They're not the structural component of the building. They're simply really the insulation and the wall, the substance of the wall. It is pest resistant. It is up to fire code. It is rot resistant, and we have structures using straw bale in this country that are over 100 years old at this point. It was a construction model that started in the plains when the straw baler was, was invented to make some affordable and really energy-efficient housing in the plains. So it'll save you about 50 to 80% on heating. And, um, like I said, there's, there's, um, three other straw bale homes that I know of in the Binghamton area. There's a lot more out in, like, Tompkins County, of course, right? Not a big surprise. So it's a little new for us in Binghamton, but it's been tried and tested in many communities. Our architect herself, she has built 12 straw bale homes.
Are there any in the city right now?
This will be the first in the city.
Is this gonna be a brown building, or is it gonna be, like, it's just, is the exterior gonna be?
It'll look like a stuccoed building. We're going to, our aesthetic we're gonna go for is very, is modern so that it doesn't look like an adobe building from the southwest. It'll, um, be, I have, uh, I don't have enough copies of this, but I'll, I'll pass this around there. This is kind of a design inspiration that we've provided to our architect, a way of going for, modern, sleek, but, you know, people won't really know what's behind those walls once it's all closed up.
Yeah, if you're worried about fire, the compact, the compactness of the straw and the coating of the plaster makes it so that combustion isn't possible.
It's pretty, is that the building you're going for up in the left-hand corner?
Um, these are all just inspirations, yeah, but the, the idea is to have something that looks, um...
So it's gonna look like a building?
It's gonna look like it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Yeah, the, the, there's a, um, in our packet, it'll, it, it'll look like any, any old building in the neighborhood. Probably a lot nicer.
Well, that's why. You said straw can, straw bale.
I've already been with myself on a makeover.
Oh, yeah. We have already, like, had that set, so I'm, I'm super excited about this.
They're really interesting.
Yeah, and they're economic, too, like, these.
Yes.
And it's, it makes easy to repair.
Yes, it is something that will work for us very well financially in terms of the upfront costs to construct, to maintain, but look like a building. And the only way, there's a little picture in here of what's called a truth window. Some folks put this in so you can see what's behind those walls, 'cause otherwise, no one would know.
Okay.
You answered a question.
Any questions or comments?
I'm gonna read up more on it. I've got, I just got it up, but I'm gonna be good with that.
Leah, thank you again.
So Ken, could you, could you chime in here? But basically, so there's this piece of legislation, and there's also, Jared's gonna bring the sale of the property up later on in our meeting. For those to be signed out, they just need a majority to be signed out, correct?
No, three points. For the sale of city...
Even if we're being signed out, I thought just the vote...
A majority to sign out. The vote is three points.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, correct.
So let's say Councilman Paffstra doesn't feel comfortable with his level of information yet during this meeting. He can still sign out with a majority and then, and then be voted on. And that is five or six members of council.
Six.
So it'd be unanimous, considering Councilman Paffstra.
Yes, 'cause the other part of this, this is a commercial building, right?
So we can all, like...
So you're gonna go planning for site plan. So the real first step is going to be a contract. You're authorizing a contract, and then they're gonna go and get site plan approved, because they aren't gonna pay us for the property until they know they can build what they want, I assume.
Well, we're, we're confident. Our architect, like I said, has worked in a number of municipalities, so she has been through this with many different communities and hasn't found any issues, and we're confident that it will work with, you know, all the codes and regulations to make sure it's safe and, you know, has a long life to it. And that's in our best interest as well. So, but I'd like to make the offer, if, um, if anybody is, you know, would like to learn some more, our architect, she herself has a, a straw bale home in Vestal. It's a really cool, modern, 3,000-square-foot structure that if you drive down Dodd Road ever, it's the one with the bright blue roof. You can't miss it.
I've seen it.
We've seen it.
It's a beautiful house.
Yeah.
I think we're lucky to be getting this type of construction in this neighborhood. Any sort of new construction, let alone something this exciting and innovative?
It'll last like any of the other housing around here. So if you look at what they have, I know you said, you know, it's not dope, you can go up there and go, you can get several all over the world. Those homes last like 3, 4, 500 years.
Yeah, so our architect has offered to welcome people to her home to see if there's any questions or concerns, be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Thank him there for sticking around.
Our president.
Chief Engleston, you're up. Number 19-212, please. How are you today?
Doing fine. I'm doing okay today.
Hello, chief.
Okay, so the first one is just to budget transfer.
Okay, uh, so the first one is just to, uh, budget transfer. Two funds, ambulance duty pay and temporary services line.
Questions or comments on this?
The budget transfer's coming out of, uh...
Equipment, repair and maintenance. We'd be lucky in that as much as broken is.
Could have always taken it out of the fire money.
Questions or comments? All right, next, 213, please.
Second one is, uh, accepting funds from, uh, we're training firefighters currently. So it's accepting funds from Johnson City, Endicott and Norwich. They're a total of $16,200. That's basically it. There's a $200, an $8 uniform fund. Somebody accidentally made the check out. They had to buy t-shirts for training, and they made the check out at the city banquet, so it's just how it transfers money around that. Money is going into the...
So we're training Endicott and Norwich, is also...
Yes, three people from, uh, Johnson City, two people from Endicott, one from Norwich. Nice. Bringing a little bit of money.
Great. Questions or comments on this? All right, Dan, move on to this one, please.
The last one is, uh, a, uh, resolution for, uh, from county's mutual aid plan. Brum County has had a mutual aid plan since 98, too. Uh, they just recently updated it. When they updated, it has to, you need a resolution from legislature body to...
What, what are the updates?
There's a few of them. It's a, it's a large document.
Want to read them all, kind of?
I'm glad to give you a copy of the...
You don't, you don't know any?
Usually, it's like, we're either in the plan or we're out of the plan. We're not in the mutual aid plan, when we need mutual aid, we don't get it. Okay, got it. No, I don't know what the, I don't know. They didn't send me a highlighted version, which would have been easy. And it's, it's a large document. I'm glad to...
But the, I, I, I'm asking broader strokes, you know, are we supplying more or less?
Now, it's generally the same plan that's been in effect. Generally the same plan. 2003 was the last time they updated. It's also updated every five years. It was 2003 and 2019.
Are there any, uh, fire departments or services that aren't part of the Brum County Mutual Aid Plan?
Not aware. Nobody in the county. It could be, but I'm not aware of any of those. Especially, everybody needs help.
Sure.
Other questions or comments?
I was glad to get your copy of the motion.
I mean, send it to me, it's okay.
Thank you, chief.
Okay.
I still say if you take, you give the fire marshal just a little cut, you're asking for money.
You can tell him I said so, too.
Yeah.
I will. I'm sure you will.
You sent it for Megan?
Yes. We have, uh, two additional properties for the side lot program, 13 Vine Street. And I think that's Councilman Moxo's district.
Vine?
13 Vine, Lower Vine.
Vine would be, oh, Lower Vine. Yes, that is my district.
You don't have anything on Vine?
Yes, I do. Right next to St., uh, St., uh, next to the...
In any event, we can, we can, we can look that up.
It's somebody's district, okay? Let it go.
It's next to, uh, we can thank you, Mr. President.
There's, uh, the property owner, Levine, wishes to, a person's property included in the RL packet is, uh, was a letter that was sent. Thank the city for demolishing it. And secondly, 41 Grant Street, this is a, I know is in Councilman Moxo's district. And this was a blighted property that was donated to the city, uh, that was demolished. And the individual who lives in the corner of Alfred Street would like to add it in as a green space, essentially a play area. It's got some woods associated with the property. So these would be two more for the side lot program for demolished properties.
Questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes?
So this, this form is, so it's called the Side Lot Program. Is there, is there a form specifically that, that people fill out to buy a property through the Side Lot Program? Fair number of people ask me about it.
Yeah, so what happens is that we have these side lots, and through our office, we reach out to the nearby surrounding property and give them all of the information, offer to purchase, basically at the same time. So depending on what sort of feedback we receive back, uh, the ones that are vetted, um, come before city council. Typically, we only have one person that's involved, in the event that we have two people, they have to submit sealed bids, correct, Ken? Or if there's an instance where it's a neighboring property, maybe the property behind it, we get input from planning as to what would make the most sense, what provides the most flexibility in terms of the property. So that, that's sort of how...
So we do the outreach proactively to the...
That's what they really mean by the side lot program.
Yeah.
But at any time, if anyone's interested in buying a piece of city property, they can submit the offer to purchase to the clerk's office.
People have reached out to clerk's office.
Yep. So we, we, again, try to be as proactive as possible. We demolish 100 properties, he got a lot of vacant lots, so if you want to get rid of them.
And I'd, uh, just like to ask for a formal apology for Councilman Moxo.
13 Vine is in fact the Councilman's.
And Councilman Pappas, I apologize formally to Councilman Pappas.
This is great to end on something you can.
Other questions about Vine or Grant Street? All right, Jared, move into your stuff, please, 201.
Uh, the first, uh, 201 is the corresponding RL, which I think everyone has, has been circulating regarding the sale of the properties. So if there's anything new on that. In case anyone has any questions. The, we got the RL 209, uh, I think it was a little bit over a month ago. We had budgeted it as part of the fiscal year '45, uh, plan for CDNG. Some funding for the after-hours team program and for the summer program membership. Um, in light of kind of some of the issues going on down in Endicott, a lot of people were lumping all of the Boys and Girls Clubs into one, uh, block process. And we wanted to make clear that our commitment, city commitment remains clear to the Boys and Girls Club to get these projects funded, uh, through 2020. So that's what these two RLs would provide for, the 209 and 210. We thank city council for the support.
Boys and Girls Club.
The executive director of the Boys and Girls Club recognized the city council's support, not just this year, but in, in previous years of the, of the programs.
Questions or comments on 209 or 210?
If you recall, as we budgeted for fiscal year '44, a budget, which believe it or not, was actually in May of 2018, uh, we wanted to start for the first time a capital program specific to human service agencies. Uh, a lot of times, you know, the funding that's available for human service agencies are for, um, the program. And a lot of these agencies have capital needs that they can't afford to, to do, they're, they're too big to crack. Or by doing the one-time investment helps them save money, uh, expand the level of services that they can provide, um, or make it easier for their programs that are already funding to exist. We put out an RFP, um, and we had responses back. We went to CEAC, which made a couple of recommendations. Some weren't able to be funded. They may have been in a flood plain, which we're going to work with that agency on it. But on, uh, on page 23, you'll see the totality of the, um, human service capital awards. Can this legislation allow those to move forward? I think, we think it was very successful. There's definitely a need out there, and we budgeted in fiscal year '45 for the same type of program.
That's a great program for capital projects, but they all could use that a lot better. Questions or comments on 211? Thank you, Jared.
Steve Carson is coming down after CEAC, but, um, I can see if, uh, I can see if he's up there.
Okay.
Expert clerk.
Ken, break. We'll go to you again. What's this here? The 250s?
That's the...
I mean, it was... Yeah, you might as well go, Ken, yes.
Currently, in my outside legal budget, I have just under $5,000. Uh, I think that's enough to probably cover what we're engaged in now. But if it's not, or if something else comes up, I talked to Chuck, I talked to the mayor, and they suggested sending, uh, transferring $5,000 additional into that line, just in case something else should come up. Uh, it's going from the senior account clerk position in the city clerk's office. Thank you very much. That's not where it should come from. They have a vacancy, so that's where Chuck said to take the money from.
So what's the, what's the scope of this inquiry that this outside agent is doing? And what would entail the, uh, a situation where, where they would, where the scope would broaden, and it would need more money?
I don't know necessarily if the scope broadens, but within the scope, it's just, it's reviewing the, the appropriateness of the internship. It's what you guys run it on. If they weren't getting responses, if they had to go back and interview people, if there were more documents than were anticipated. I don't think the scope so much the issue is the level of cooperation.
So what are they, are they going to be reaching out to council members, interviewing them? Are they, are they continuing? What sort of authority does, does an outside counsel have? Has this ever happened before?
I mean, have we ever hired outside counsel to do internal reviews?
Yeah, sure. Why didn't I?
But there was, there was...
Why, okay. Why not?
No, because...
What, what makes an, what makes an outside attorney have to come to the city council?
If somebody asked me to do it, and if I get a majority of council requesting it, or if the mayor's office requested it, I actually think the last one, the mayor, just requested that it be done. Uh, but in that case, actually, I think we had sufficient funds at that point, although I think we moved money subsequent to that. I'm not sure what your...
Uh, does that question?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and, and is there, is there a specific, uh, note? What is the, what is the level of, um, investigation here in terms of, you know, what they're looking for? Are there presumptive laws that have been broken? Is it election law? Is it?
That's what the investigation...
City, in the city law?
That's what the investigation will determine.
Okay.
It started off with council asked for it, and basically it was to review the internship. So that's what, that's what they'll do. Where, where that takes, and that goes back to your question, is depending on what facts are garnered at that, they may say, oh, this is, there's an election issue, which I haven't raised with, you know, I haven't discussed with anybody, but maybe they'll see some.
Right, but you, you saw issue with it, so I'm just asking what, where did you see the issue? Was it, would it, did you see issue with it because you thought it might infringe on election law, or infringe on, you know, city code?
We've now asked outside counsel to do it, so that's what city council has to do, so I'm leaving that up to the outside counsel.
Right, but you brought it up, that's the issue. So you must have seen some issue with...
I provided facts to people on council, and they asked for outside counsel to review it.
What sort of, um, what's, what sort of powers, if any, are going to be granted to this, um, uh, to this firm? Of, of course, their investigation.
What do you mean by powers?
I mean, like, what, what do they, how, how do they go about doing their investigation? Are they...
They read things and they talk to you.
Okay, so they're, they're not going to be granted any, like, formal authority, or they're just... I guess I'm, I'm just curious to know what, what exactly they're empowered to do. Other than ask questions.
To investigate. But I'm not sure any of them, you're asking whether or not they have subpoena power?
I don't know.
Are you asking that?
Do they?
No.
Okay.
Councilman, if you're going to read questions off your phone, you can just send them to me, and we can try to get back to you.
Sure, well, I'd, I'd like to ask them now, if it's not a, it's not an imposition.
You're reading questions off your phone, I guess that's what concerned you. I'm happy to answer your questions. I would like to know whose questions they are.
They're my questions. I write my questions down...
On your phone?
On my phone, um, or on paper. What, what is their, like, what's the end result here? They can be producing some sort of a report? Like, what's the, the final product? Okay, um, and...
It seems like a big problem here was that there, there wasn't any sort of policy that the city of Binghamton had in the first place regarding interns, whether it's interns for previous council members or current ones, so it's, you know, it's part of the scope of work here.
Because it, kind of, that sure matters. We, we've already referred it to outside counsel, I mean...
I'm, I'm asking a legitimate question, because we're spending taxpayer dollars on this. So are they going to, is there going to be a scope of work here include them creating some sort of policy that the city of Binghamton candid offered regarding interns?
Kind of, the MLU said this was an intern for Binghamton City. That's where the rub came in to begin with. So it's not a matter of policy, it's just a matter of what, what was written down, what was read, and what we had no knowledge of. So that's where the review is committed.
And for me, there was a policy. I'm kind of lit about this, because I'm the one who sat there when I started trying to get housing, like you say, for refugees. I could not get an MIU from BU because we did not have an office, our own office. So how the heck did he get to do it if I can't, and I was going through the same system and had to work with the city? He had gone through the city like he should have. He should have been there to ask those same questions. He didn't get that set up.
Right, and I think it's a problem that you as a council member, you know, that we as a city don't have, don't have an outlined process. So if we're already bringing in outside counsel to, and, and, and paying the money to investigate this, then...
The personnel office has a process for interns. The mayor has a lot of them.
Right, but for council members, there, there isn't.
It would be the same policy.
But it's not that. It's the fact, for me, it was the fact that Binghamton University refused to work with the city council. No, I'm just telling you, they refused to work with the city council, because we're not counted as full-time, and we're not counted as having our own office. And that was through the same program he was using. So I don't know.
I don't know either.
I find all the questions...
Is that, my only question is that, is that in their, in, in his or her scope of, of, of work? Is that something that we might see come out of this, that might be productive?
If your question is whether or not the outside attorney at the end should recommend this is what needs to be done...
Good practices for government.
I can ask to make sure that's included, because I'm sure they'll be talking to the person in the office, which already has a process, so that's why I'm holding on. The councilwoman's point is just having outside the process. That's, that seems to be part of the issue. But I will certainly ask council to, when they're talking to personnel, to make sure that that's part of what they're reviewing.
Has Corporation Counsel's Office refused itself from, from this?
Whether or not we're conducting the investigation, or that we're going to participate in the investigation as people who are going to be interviewed?
I guess I'm just curious to know if Corporation Counsel's conflicted in its role to represent the city council as a whole and the individual city council people?
City council asked for the investigation. Everybody voted for it.
We asked.
I, I'm aware of that. Um, I'm actually asking if Corporation Counsel is, um, is obliged to represent the individual city council members and the city council as a whole, um, is, I'm asking, in that context, is Corporation Counsel conflicted here?
I, I think you're going to have to explain that question in writing, lay out what it is you're trying to get at, and if my office thinks it requires a response, we'll respond. Right now, city council voted unanimously to have... Right now, City Council voted unanimously to have outside council review this.
So then you have, so Corporation Council's office hasn't recused itself from this?
Recused itself from what?
From this.
From conducting the investigation?
From being, yeah, from being involved in this.
We're not conducting the investigation. Whether or not we're involved will depend on the investigation.
Okay.
Right, if people have made factual statements, the Corporation Council's said something, they're going to ask us those questions. If there were public statements made, I assume we're going to respond to them. Right, that was the point of the investigation, correct?
Other questions or comments? Jared's back. Jared's back.
Steve's in, Steve's in.
Side in the corner.
See you walking in, Steve.
People is tied up with CEAC, so.
This is always going to, probably the future is going to be like this, where I'm going to say, please put me on the end of the agenda. All right, so I threw four RLs out yet once, although once not probably technically an RL. If you let me know which one's the first one or give me an agenda, I can.
Two eighteen, it's update citizen, two nineteen, apologies.
Okay, all right, okay, so amend the two thousand and nineteen community development budget to fund temporary services. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes, yep.
So in that case, we're going to take some unspent salary funds in my department. We're going to move them over to, I believe, temporary. Exact budget line we're moving into. But in essence, what that'll allow us to do, fund temporary services, we're going to hire a consultant to assist with the CDVG program. We already have someone planned for this. It's the former director of county union CDVG program. We have some things we want to get tightened up, regulations wise with HUD. And possibly start us going on our consolidated plan, which is the big five-year plan, and that'll be gearing up for next year as well. So this will provide him, forget our estimated, maybe fifty to sixty hours this year to help with this. And I look forward to him, you know, sort of reviewing our process, make sure we're good, and see where we can fix things and address some HUD issues.
Didn't he work for the City of Binghamton?
He did, many, many years ago.
Very, very nice man, very smart man.
This will not involve any increase in the budget for the, for my department. All this is moving funds around.
Questions on RL two nineteen? How about two eighteen, please?
Two eighteen, okay, so as I said, HUD has had some issues, and so some of the stuff I'm going to be doing in the end of the year is addressing these issues. We had an audit, I wouldn't call it an audit, let's call it an onsite visit from HUD. They found some issues of concern and were trying to address those. One was, they said that our citizen participation plan needed to be updated to address very specific language, which I have. They also asked for proof that our citizen participation plan had ever had public feedback. Our citizen participation plan is from the nineteen seventies originally. I cannot find proof that there was public hearings back then, so we're just going to say, hey, we're going to update it. And if you guys can hold a public hearing before you approve the changes to the plan, that should satisfy everything. HUD seemed okay with that. So that's what I'm asking for, is both to accept the updates, which is really just tightening up language, department changes, putting in those things that HUD wants, taking out things we don't do, like we don't mail out, things we usually do a listserv instead. And hold a public hearing during this process before it's approved.
Where do you want the public hearing?
Whenever the next, so it wouldn't be this Wednesday, it'd be the Wednesday after or whatever. And that's fine. There's no. Yeah, whatever that appropriate time would be.
So you wanted to announce that?
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
When is the next? Okay, because Thanksgiving is late, it's the twentieth, so it's the twentieth.
The week before, yeah.
So at meetings, so at this Wednesday's meeting, the sixth, we'll announce a public hearing on the twentieth.
And I should probably be there for it to take up any, take that spin.
Questions on two eighteen? Two forty, please.
Two twenty, amend the existing twenty nineteen contract agreement, we're not cooperative. This is not involved an increase in their current contract. What this is, is a, they're going to reduce on one salary line and add in a new salary line. This happens from time to time. They don't estimate their, you know, they do these, they do these applications over, you know, a year in advance, so if there's staff changes or something like that that occurred, they ask for these changes to be done. No change in the contract amount. It's an eligible expense, just adding in a new salary line. Reducing one salary line and adding in a brand-new salary line. Because they're adding in a brand-new salary line, it has to come to council for approval.
Questions or comments on two twenty? Talking about the public hearing, right?
Oh, this would be a separate public hearing.
It is, okay.
Okay, so, and one thing HUD also asks is that when we do a CAPER, which is our annual report every year, that we have, it's called a CAPER.
I mean, what is the acronym?
Oh, sorry, good, yeah, HUD speak, I always speak. Consolidated, consolidated annual performance and evaluation review. What it does is it looks at our numbers for the year, what we've done, outcomes, any changes or issues we have. It's kind of just like a report card. We never before had to have a public hearing. We do a public notice and people have time to respond to it, but HUD is actually asking for a public hearing. I've updated the citizen participation plan, which I spoke of earlier, to include, when you do the CAPER, make sure there's a public hearing so you can get feedback on it. Council doesn't have to approve the CAPER. CAPER is, of course, there for your review should you choose. This is just a public hearing in the council business meeting for citizens to make comments on what they perceive about the CAPER, whether they think there's issues or whatever, and then that will go into regular, when I see.
Questions or comments?
And that will be, the draft version will be available Wednesday, when you do, when you start to announce the public hearing, so we'll be completed with that.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We run to you now.
So this last one, we came up a little short with what we owe the county for the dog shelter services. We're just moving some money at the end of the year, so we're, we could build accordingly from that.
Two thousand and forty-sixty dollars.
Because they're, our contract goes up by CPI every year. That was factored into last year's budget, so.
Questions or comments? All right, we have to pen your legislation for you.
Just what's listed there, the the funding from DA's office. DPW budget. Change order number two. The digesters? Nope? Yes? Fire budget overtime. DPW budget, construction materials. And, and the charter for health insurance.
Questions or comments on the?
And then the one, two, three, four star, sorry, correct, three star.
Before we leave, should we just tentatively schedule that planning committee meeting and just have Lee check in with Tito and any other members of the planning office if they can make it? What we talked about earlier with Monday, November eighteenth, at five fifteen or five thirty?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yes.
I don't think we need anybody else to come and speak, but we'd like to check with Tito to see what's going on there.
Yeah, I think.
Just keep taking it one.
Yeah. Obviously, Tito wanted to be here, but he was like. Okay. I'll check in with him.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
I've got something. Councilman Livingston, I saw the interview last week from Fox Morning. And I wrote this down because of, the shot, the quote book. So you said, unlawful partisan hit job, you run out of Corporation Council's office. That was a quote from me. I've been around Kent Frank for three years now in his office. They've been nothing but apolitical. They don't get involved in politics. And I have a apology to say to them about that. I mean, obviously, you feel it, but I, where's that come from?
The, the timing of it is awfully suspicious in my mind. The there's, there's a, there are actually a number of things, but I don't really know that I feel comfortable talking about it right now.
Well, the timing, just let me say, the timing of it, say, is suspicious, but that's just when we found out about it. It had nothing to do with the timing of before it happened at this close, we just found out about it. It was circumstantial. That's a fact.